Seven oh five. The vote called for selection of applicants except for Selectman McCoy, who's had some work commitments tonight. We're going to start up by transmitting a Treasury Warrants fifty-three, fifty-three A, fifty-four, fifty-four A, fifty-five, one, one A, two, and two A.
The warrants is read by the chairman.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous? We have no minutes to approve tonight. Our first appointment is with Andrea Core, a paralegal Christopher E. Coleman Esquire, P.C., on behalf of Hong Tai Inc., doing business as China Walk, requesting a common particular license for property located at three twenty-nine Main Street. Good evening.
My name is Andrea Core. Today we are here to, for sitting the board to approve our application for the transfer of common visual license. Actually, it's just for the change of ownership. The owner is going to keep everything same even though the business name is the same. Hours of operation is the same and the type of menu is also the same. So, we are happy to answer if the board have any questions.
Okay. Any recommendations?
Ms. Chairman, we have a recommendation from the Health Director approving the issuance of the common visual license for Hong Tai, again, doing business as China Walk, and also a recommendation from Mr. Spaulding, Inspector of Buildings, who's reviewed the application for the property. There are no outstanding zoning issues. If the board decides to approve the request, the applicant is going to need to submit a certificate of insurance.
Sure.
Prior to any release of the license.
Yep, definitely.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
Well, unless there's anybody in the audience that convinces me otherwise, I'd move to approve the request subject to the delivery of the certificate of insurance as outlined by the manager.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second. Is there any, anybody out there that wants to speak on behalf of this? Okay, I have a motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our seven-ten appointment is with Joseph M. Gleason, Verizon New England Inc., is reason for public hearing relative to request to Verizon New England Inc. and Reading Municipal Light Department to place one pole on Lexington Street. Mr. Gleason, how are you tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Joseph Gleason. I'm a right-of-way agent with Verizon New England Inc., property located at twenty-eighth Diana Lane in Drakeett. The petition before this evening, Mr. Chairman, is a request of Verizon to place a new pole, basically a midspan pole, on the southerly side of Lexington Street, adjacent to the driveway at number twelve Lexington Street. The locus of this new pole will be approximately one hundred and sixty-six feet from the center line of Cunningham Street. South of, excuse me, east of Cunningham Street. The reason that Verizon is requesting this pole locus is that currently the premises at twelve Lexington Street is serviced by a pole on the northerly side of the street, which is a little bit further up from the driveway. It's causing a real problem for service to twelve Lexington Street because the clearance has become very low. The wires are sagging and they're actually snaking through the low foliage adjacent to the driveway. And I believe the property owner actually placed their own kind of device in the middle of their lawn to sort of lift up the wires from sagging. So, what we'd like to do is we'd like to place this new pole, two eighty-four over four and one-half, which is like a midspan pole, at the corner of the driveway to effectively alleviate that clearance. In addition, if you allow us to place this pole, we'll also be remedying another problem at that location. There's a budding property where the lines are currently crossing. This is an aerial encroachment, and we'd like to alleviate that aerial encroachment across the property that's budding this property and bring the service from that new pole into the property at twelve Lexington Street. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
If I may, yeah, a basic question procedurally. The existing pole that right now is the source of lines that are sagging low, what happens to that pole after this new pole goes in?
Oh, that pole's going to stay.
It stays in place.
That pole will remain, that pole will remain in place and actually will be running service from the existing pole, two eighty-four over four, on the north side of Lexington Street, to pole two eighty-four over four and one-half. And then from that new pole, we'll be running the service into twelve Lexington Street.
Oh, I see. Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, actually, I may not have mentioned this, that currently service is coming from two eighty-four over four on the northerly side of the street.
So, it crosses all the way over across the street and into the residence?
Yeah.
What's causing that?
It's a real, I would not look that, it's about as bad a sag as I've ever seen. You know, it's, 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 not only is it sagging, but the, but the property owner has actually placed something there to prop up the lines and it's still sagging. So, it's a real, it's a real danger out there, so.
Any questions or comments from the audience? There are none? Entertainer motion?
I would move to approve the position of the new pole on Lexington Street servicing residence number twelve as, as petitioned in our documentation.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should wait a couple of minutes.
Oh, she's here. It's not a public hearing, right?
Oh, it's not, okay. And our seven fifteen appointment is with Pamela McKenzie, Treasurer Collector for Compensation Balance Agreement and Banking Services. Good evening, Pamela. How are you tonight?
Fine, how are you? On June ninth, I issued a request for proposals for the town's banking services, which include the depository, payroll, and accounts, excuse me, accounts payable for a three-year term, which is scheduled to begin on August second. I sent this proposal out to, by request, to nine banking institutions, five of which responded. Based on these proposals, I recommend that the contract be awarded to the lowest bidder, which was Eastern Bank. They come in at zero cost. They have, were awarded our contract last time around, and they truly have been a zero-cost banking service for the town for the last three years.
That's who it will last, no costs, no problems, no issues?
No.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Chairman, this is in keeping with the responsibilities vested in the Board of Selectmen at the town meeting, where they need to approve any banking services that the town goes forward with. And as Pam indicated, we have been using Eastern Bank for the past three years and we've had very good success with them. And they are obviously the low bidder, as you can see by the summary sheet.
Chairman, the last time that we talked about this contract, I think I asked a similar question. I believe I know the answer, but for informational purposes to the public, if you could just speak to the fact that they're adequately insured with all of the, you know, happenings in the banking industry.
They are. They have all the required insurances to protect the town, yes.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Do we need to inform the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, would entertain a motion.
I'd move to accept the recommendation and execute a compensating balance agreement with Eastern Bank.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our seven-twenty-five appointment is with Michael Morris, the Town Accountant, for authorization to borrow nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars over a ten-year period for the purchase of an aerial ladder truck for the fire department in accordance with General Laws, Chapter forty-four, subsection seven, nine.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one correction and I apologize? You have it listed at nine thirty-five. It should be nine seventy-five. I apologize to the board for that. We've made a correction on the official copies that have been posted.
And this is what was voted on at town meeting?
That's right.
Mr. Morris?
I think it's rather simple. Under Chapter forty-four, section seven slash nine, there is a pile of rules for investing, no, I'm sorry, for borrowing money. And in the case of the ladder truck, it is included in there with all kinds of other equipment. And to be rather conservative, they put down a minute, you know, a five-year limit on the borrowing. You can amend that for up to fifteen years, depending on the useful life. In this case, clearly, for a new ladder truck, the useful life is longer than five years. Can actually go to twenty and twenty-five years. We are recommending that it be increased to ten years. That corresponds to the way we want to set up the debt for several other pieces of debt that we are issuing. It'll make it much easier budgetarily, and with a good interest rate, we should be able to keep our costs in very good shape.
Ms. Reddy, you want to say on that?
No, I, just to echo what Mr. Morris is saying, this dates back to the two thousand and nine annual town meeting, when the town authorized the borrowing of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this purpose, and that those funds will be sufficient. And again, it is, the bond issue is expected shortly. We will be conferencing with Standard and Poor's, which I expect will confirm the rating that they just gave on the town of double A plus. And that will take place later this week, and this is one of the last pieces that we need to go, to go forward with our authorization. Unless, unless the board has questions, I'd like to suggest a motion that would meet Bond Council's, or that would satisfy the needs of Bond Council.
Okay.
All right, so I would recommend the adoption of a motion acknowledging that the maximum useful life of the aerial ladder truck to be purchased for the fire department be financed with the proceeds of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar borrowing, authorized by the affirmative vote of the town as reflected in Article six B of the May second, two thousand and annual town meeting, for a maximum useful life of ten years pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-four, section seven, subsection nine. And if, if that motion could be put on the table, Mr. Chairman, I can just explain one thing that looks a little bit strange.
Okay, you said two thousand. You meant two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine, right.
Any other questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
I'll make the motion as read by the Town Manager, fiscal officer, that we move forward with the proposal that he just wrote.
I'd like to second the motion after, I'd like, I do have a general question. So, I'm not, it will impact my seconding the motion, but the question is, this was put forth or voted by the town at town meeting in two thousand and nine.
Right.
From that point till today, you know, we based this nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on research and analysis that I imagine the chief and other parties had done at that time, based on the equipment and whatever. From that point till today, have there been changes? Has there been a constant evolving relationship? Or are we still planning on buying the same truck we were planning on buying in two thousand and nine?
No, the truck, the truck went out for bid.
Okay.
And the original estimate was actually one million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Yeah, and so we did go out for bid. We got a pretty favorable bid. The truck is being manufactured, and we expect delivery before the end of the, the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure how that process worked.
Yeah, and the point I wanted to make was, because of the way the Mass General Laws work and the recommendation of Bond Council, we put in maximum life of ten years, even though in fact, obviously, this aerial ladder truck will likely last for up to thirty years, as the, as the current one has. But this is in keeping with the municipal indebtedness. It's a section of the, of the General Law.
Okay.
So, I will second the motion.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. This is a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you if you're on the other stuff, so you can go to that.
Not quite being seven-thirty yet, why don't we have Town Manager start the communications?
Chairman, we have a memorandum from Donald Anisat, the Superintendent of Public Works, relative to the Route thirty-eight, Route sixty-two intersection issue that the board discussed at their last meeting on June twenty-eighth, where they expressed some concern about the way traffic was moving at that intersection. Representatives from the Police Department and the Public Works Department met with representatives in Massachusetts Department of Transportation Traffic Engineers at the site, and the purpose of the meeting was to review the operation of the traffic signals and attempt to determine if they were operating properly. As you recall, it's been the town's opinion that the railroad signal preemption was not operating as designed. During a train crossing, signal preempt, the signals are designed to function in a manner such that at Main Street, at Route thirty-eight, Burlington Avenue, at Route sixty-two eastbound, Main Street southbound, and Church Street, Route sixty-two westbound, all should have a green light. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation Engineers indicated that they would investigate the controller for the signals to determine if they were functioning correctly. The investigation is now complete, and it revealed that the signals were not operating as designed during the railroad preempt phase. Mike Karas, who was the District Four Traffic Operations Engineer, indicated that only the Burlington Avenue eastbound green phase was operating during the, correctly during the preempt phase. And as a result, traffic was not allowed to proceed on Church Street westbound. Mr. Karas has informed Superintendent Anisat that the traffic controller has been reset to function properly, and it is his opinion that the traffic flow through the intersection should improve with this correction. Hopefully, it has. We'll continue to monitor the situation, but this was a direct result of the discussion, I think, that Selectman McCoy had initiated. We have a letter from Representative Misselli responding to the board's request for his position on House Bill four-three-seven-four, an act to require producer responsibility for the collection, reuse, and recycling of discarded electronic products, and House Bill seven-two-six, an act relative to producer responsibility for mercury-added lamps. Representative Misselli writes that he sees no basis for opposing either of these pieces of legislation, and that he will be supporting the bills when they are to be voted upon. We have memorandum from Leo Norton, the Administration of Finance Division official from the MWRA regarding the FY two thousand and eleven water and sewer assessments. He indicates that overall, the combined water and sewer rate revenue increase over fiscal year ten assessments is at one point four-nine percent. This is a, one of the lowest increases. In terms of the town of Wilmington, we're actually seeing a decrease in sewer, just a slight decrease, but it does go down percentage-wise by about one point one percent, from a million nine eighty-five to a million nine sixty-three. We're also seeing the first assessments with regard to water, and in this case, it's only a hundred thousand dollars, so it's really minimal at this point. The real information is that there is no expectation of any increase in water rates as we go forward. In fact, they've been established with no increase. And finally, we have correspondence from Jane Lyman of Comcast, who has given us a cable services update regarding additional services that are going to be provided in the various packages that are offered to the customers. They're going to be providing all of this information through a bill message that will be descriptive in terms of new charges and changes in service. In addition, they've indicated that they have begun to offer new services in the community, which include services relating to Latino programming, including Hispanic Stotter, Multi-Latino Extra, Multi-Latino Max, and Multi-Latino Ultra. And again, this information will be provided to their subscribers.
Okay. We're back to our seven-thirty appointment now. Mr. Charles Lyons, the Superintendent, Director of Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District for Health, to give us some information on the Health and Life Sciences Wing and the renovation project. Mr. Lyons, how you doing tonight?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Pleasure to be here. Let me, if I could, like to pass out two pieces of information. I think I've got enough copies for everybody, including Mr. McCoy. The first, the first piece of information is just an update on Shawshank Tech. And if you wouldn't mind, let's just flip over a few of the charts, and if any members have any questions, they can call me or they can call the two outstanding Wilmington residents that you represent, the interest of you on the Shawshank School. I'm joined here by Attorney Robert Peterson, who's been on our committee for sixteen years, and Mr. James Gillis has been on our committee for seventeen years. The first, the first page just shows you the history of our budget for the last six years and what's happened to municipal assessments. And the assessments include, I might add, all capital costs associated with the school districts. For the last three years, our assessment overall has, has gone up zero percent. What's even more amazing in the next two pages is that our cost per pupil for attending Shawshank to the member communities has gone down from six years ago. The, the third page gives you a more graphic indication of what started to happen, beginning in fiscal year oh eight, with the advent of the modifications to the Chapter Seventy program. In effect, the two biggest beneficiaries in that new changes, the Chapter Seventy program, happen to be Shawshank Tech and the town of Wilmington. And so, the cost, cost of local taxpayers is indicative of the savings. The next page shows the actual per pupil expenditures over the past four years of all the school districts within the Shawshank Tech region in Shawshank Tech. Shawshank Tech has seen an increase in enrollment. Our expenditure per pupil is obviously higher than the average expenditure because it's vocational technical education. You can't put twenty-two students in a metal fat program. They call them nubsy or stubby after a while. But, but comparatively speaking, our costs have been held in check. Our expenditures, this actual end-of-the-year expenditure reports shows an increase of about fourteen percent over a four-year period, compared to an average of twenty-five percent for member towns. The next page shows that in graphic detail. What I think is a very important chart is how do we spend, in terms of net school spending, vis-a-vis foundation? The state recognizes that the cost of educating students in a vocational technical program is a lot higher, for example, than educating students in an elementary school program or a kindergarten program. So, the state assigns a value of what's the average cost of educating pupils in Massachusetts. At Shawshank Tech, we spend about one hundred and eighteen percent of the statewide average, vis-a-vis our foundation budget. The state average is about one hundred and fifteen point three percent. All of our towns exceed that expenditure per pupil average vis-a-vis foundation. The highest is Bedford, that spends about one hundred and fifty-six percent of foundation, followed by Burlington, that spends about one hundred and forty percent of foundation. Bill Ricker spends about one hundred and twenty-two percent of foundation. Wilmington, about one hundred and nineteen percent. Shawshank, one hundred and eighteen point one. And Tushby, about one hundred and, one hundred and eight percent, the fiscal year ten. The next page shows you how we've tried to keep the capital cost in check, including the issuance of the bond issue that was voted by the school committee back on June eighth. Our, the, the red chart shows you the portion of our overall assessment, the sixteen point five million, which is attributed to capital cost. The blue, the blue line here shows you what our capital budget has been. And it's anywhere from nine hundred thousand to a projected budget of about a million one in fiscal year thirteen. The next two pages are strictly student data, data pages that have been taken from Department of Education reports. It shows you, first of all, that students love coming to Shawshank Tech. We have one of the highest actual average daily attendance rates in the state. Thirteen hundred and ten students last year, on average, came to school ninety-six point four percent of the days in session. Our dropout rate last year was zero point five percent. It's one-sixth of the average dropout rate of high school students in Massachusetts. The rate last year was about two point nine percent. The first time in ten years that the state had a dropout rate of less than three percent. We have the lowest dropout rate in the state in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, of point two percent. The next chart shows you the four-year graduation rate. These are the students who begin school as freshmen and graduate as seniors. Graduation rate at Shawshank Tech last year was over ninety-five percent for two thousand and eight. Obviously, the town of Burlington was a little bit larger than ours, or better than ours, but on average, our graduation rate is terrific. What this shows you is kids don't drop out, they love coming to school, and they graduate on time. Our special ed graduation rate, and by the way, the state average is about eighty percent for high school students. We're at about ninety-five percent. For special needs students, the state average of students graduating within a four-year period is sixty percent. Our average last year was over ninety-six percent. And about twenty-six percent of our students are special education. The next chart shows you our MCAS performance in English Language Arts. This is the percentage of students who scored advanced to proficient up through two thousand and nine. Now, you're going to read about the two thousand and ten data in about two weeks when it's released. All I can tell you, without violating any confidentiality from the Department of Education, is our two thousand and ten data is better than our two thousand and nine data. Shows you our math performance. We went from about fifty-eight percent scoring advanced to proficient in math in two thousand and five to eighty-four percent in two thousand and nine. And this is with a population of twenty-six percent special education. If you look on the next chart, this is the percent of disabled MCAS test takers in two thousand and nine compared to the five high schools in our district. On average, Wilmington, Bedford, and Bill Ricker have about fifteen percent of their sophomores without U.P.s. Burlington has about eleventh percent. Tushby has about twelve percent, and Shawshank Tech is over twenty-six percent. So, even when you include these statistics, Shawshank Tech's percentage of students who scored advanced and proficient compared to all our local high schools, we, we, we match up pretty evenly, and we're very proud of that. Compared to vocational technical high schools, we have the highest mean score in the state across all categories, English Language Arts, Science, and Mathematics in two thousand and nine. We were number one in every single category. I don't know how we're going to do in two thousand and ten, but in terms of the growth model that the state used a year ago to compare three hundred and eighty-eight districts, where our growth was in terms of where students were when they came to Shawshank and where they ended up when they took the MCAS exam, we had the fifth highest growth rate in the state for English Language Arts. We're in the seventy-third percentile. Again, I can't, I'm not at liberty to tell you how two thousand and ten was, but it was better than two thousand and nine. And those will be coming up. So, the first piece of information I wanted to share with you is what you get for and what you pay. And the biggest winner over the last six years has been the town of Wilmington. Your, your expenditure per pupil to Shawshank Tech has gone from somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand dollars down to about twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. And that's primarily because of the changes in the Chapter Seventy formula that we really effectively, working with Mike Kyra and others, lobbied for in two thousand and seven. You know what I'd like to do is give Shawshank Tech's finest a copy of this, the records. The next piece of information is just a description of the addition that we've been planning for the last year and a half. And we're very pleased to report has been approved by the Mass School Building Authority for funding. The first page shows you what the addition will look like. And if you come into Shawshank Tech at the back right side of our building, that's exactly where the diesel program is located. We started a process about a year and a half ago when we applied for a federal stimulus grant for this addition. We were encouraged to do so by the Patrick Murray administration when Congress was considering putting money aside for school construction. We were told that those projects that could be done in a hundred and eighty days, from concept design to shovel on the ground, would receive highest priority. And the House of Representatives actually put in the federal stimulus program about thirty billion dollars initially for school construction progress. $30 billion initially for school construction projects. They weren't funded by the Senate, and therefore, the plausibility of the federal government funding this project died. But we were able, because we had gone through conceptual design, we were able to file a very timely statement of interest with the Mass School Building Authority. And as part of that statement of interest was an analysis of the types of jobs that would be in the Merrimack Valley over the next 10 to 15 years. And we took a look at our automotive diesel mechanic type positions, which have been getting less and less. We don't have as many mechanic bays, for example, at gas stations than we had 10, 15 years ago. And we've seen a closing of overall car dealerships in Massachusetts. About 50% of the car dealerships have closed in the last three years in Massachusetts. Because the plausibility of employment in the mechanical automotive diesel mechanic trade areas is lessening considerably. So what we decided to do was to take a look at those areas where high school students upon graduation from high school could be gainfully employed and touch the middle class. And what we found out, looking at labor market analysis material that was provided by a report from Labor and Workforce Development of the Commonwealth of Mass, there were three areas that we seized upon. One of those areas was health technology field, LPNs, et cetera. Another part was dental technician field, and the third was medical technician field. And as you can see in the material that we submitted to the state, we took a look at all of those employments, the articulation agreements we've had with various colleges at Shawshene for some of these programs. And we wanted to expand the number of programs offered at Shawshene in life science, medical science field. Shawshene has a 260,000 square foot facility. You can eat off the floors in this building. There are 1,300 students, 1310 to be exact, that we serve from five communities. We've done a number of upgrades in the last 20 years. We've had three other bond issues that we've passed in the last 20 years. The building is structurally sound and will be fiscally in great shape for the next 20 to 25 years. The part of the building that we're going to be remodeling is about 12,000 square feet. It's the diesel mechanic program. It's completely underutilized, it's educational space at this point. And we want to expand curricula to meet career training in the 21st century. The proposed area for renovation includes that diesel area of 12,000 square feet. It currently rolls about 25 students. We'll be able to serve about 115 students in this new addition. The new addition is only going to be 2,000 square feet. We'll have open floor area allowable for flexible partition layout. We have high roof structure in that end of the building, so we'll be able to have classrooms upstairs as well. We have open exterior parking lot adjacent to the shop allows for this 2,000 square foot addition. We put a new roof on three years ago, remodeled the school with new air conditioning units as well, and we've had about a half a million dollars in electrical upgrade. So I think this will be the last renovation project that I'll probably be associated with, and so this one is going to last for quite a number of years. If you look at the map of the school here, it's to the right side of the map or the right corner of the map. Here's a bad picture of our current diesel program. We will be selling all this equipment by public bid and inviting folks to come down and purchase it. We'll be advertising this consistent with Inspector General recommendations. There's a picture of the existing outdoor space of the diesel program where we'll be putting a 2,000 square foot addition. We highlight for you the additional entrance in the area of renovation on another flow chart of the school. We show you the area of renovation in the area of addition. There's a picture of the school. It's interesting, the folks who built this school back in '67 did a great job. There's 92 acres here on this site. The school currently uses only 21 acres. So 25, 30 years from now, when they build a new Shawshene Valley Technical High School to meet the needs of that economy, you'll be able to build a brand-new school up on the hill, and you'll be able to use the existing facility for recreational space. Because by then, the facility's going to be about 70 years old, and it might be need to be rebuilt. But the planners who built this facility just did a marvelous job. KBA Architects has been hired and approved by the School Billing Authority as our architectural firm. They did an artistic review of the outdoors. I'm going to give the chairman a colored copy, though, because I didn't know how to run the color printer today. We have one. I just didn't know how to run it. So that gives you a better idea. You can share that with the members of what it would look like, the outside of the facility. It will have a office-type atmosphere, like a clinician's office or a technician's office when you walk into the facility. We'll be able to use it at night for an expanding program with our, we have a licensed practical nursing program at night at no cost to the district, where we are currently graduating 40 or so licensed practical nurses. They come to school from 4:30 or 5:30 in the afternoon until 9:30 at night, and they do their clinical rounds in hospitals on weekends. It's all tuition-based. They'll be serving us in this area as well. The schedule is this sheet here. And if I could just take a minute to explain the schedule. We are through design development, a conceptual design development. And now that all of the towns have decided not to call town meetings, we will be getting into construction documents. We hope to be securing bids and securing contracts in December of this year, and we hope this will be constructed and open in September of 2011. We're using sustainable design approaches, specifying green materials that are low VAC and require minimal maintenance. We'll incorporate, consistent with MSBA recommendations, skylights in the facility, minimizing the need for lighting and saving on electricity. We have some concerns moving forward. We think the schedule now is pretty concise and pretty tight. We've already done soil contamination and tests, and we have no soil contamination. We did that back in '93. We eliminated all our underground oil tanks in the building, with the exception of the tank at Autobody, which is tested every year. And the only place we had oil contamination was around automotive. But we've never had a problem around diesel, and the preliminary analysis indicates there's no oil erosion. We will have some noise in construction during the ongoing program, but it's going to be right next to our carpentry program, our HVAC program, our plumbing program, and our electrical program, and they better get used to the noise anyways, because that's what they're going to experience when they become in the field. The last page shows you the total project cost. We're going to receive about 56% MSBA. We've already been approved for that by the Mass School Billing Authority. In their May meeting, they approved this project and they funded it. We'll be borrowing about $2.1 million, consistent with some excellent recommendations from collective wisdom of the five town managers. We'll be doing a 10-year bond issue. We will be eating the first two years of principal and interest cost because our finances are in order. I anticipate having a certification of excess and deficiency, which is free cash, of close to 4.96% of operating budget, which would mean that we would be able to have sufficient funds certified this July to pick up the principal and interest costs of fiscal year 11, which is rather minimal, and I think I gave you paperwork a few weeks ago on that in fiscal year 12. We presented that fiscal plan to the school committee on June 8th. The school committee voted unanimously to authorize the debt for this project. We then informed the towns of that decision. The towns, under the law, have the right to reject the project if they want to call a town meeting within 60 days. Very intelligent and wise boards of selectmen has recognized the value of this project and supported it, and we appreciate the support that you gave us a few weeks ago. So with that, I'd like to invite any questions you may want to entertain, and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Very, very nice presentation. A lot of information. Any questions, comments from the board?
My comment would be that I certainly appreciate Mr. Lyons and members of the committee being here. To my way of thinking, the most valuable portion of the information was really publicly making the points that you did about the careers that you're trying to accommodate, and it's based in research and logic. It's not just based in some abstract white tower kind of ivory tower kind of mindset. You know, it's all about trying to educate kids and give them a chance to make a living in the workplace, give them what the workplace is going to hold for them in a few years. So I think that's very beneficial for not only the board, but the general public to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Lyons and members of the board of directors.
That you did an outstanding job through the years. There's no doubt about it at that presentation that you just gave us, that your achievements have been very well overstated as far as the production and the activity that you're getting out of it. I think the ideas that you're giving as far as diesel shop trading to health, that's where it's going to be at, no doubt. I think it's given the kids a great future with the needs of education going into a job occupation to make a good career. I think it's a wise choice. I think you did, planning unbelievable. The presentation, you said that a new school, 70 years, this one here, but still going to have a use, go to new school on that hill. I just think your thoughts are so far and beyond that you guys ought to have a great, great, all five communities should be overwhelmed with the production that you people are giving and achieving, even through the education and the outpatients, I mean, all products of the pupils that are graduating with those statistics. So again, all hats off.
Thank you.
I think sometimes the Shawshene Tech is a tremendous resource that many of us sort of take for granted. It's out there, we know it's there, but this opportunity, that your presentation tonight for me, and I suspect like many people watching, really punctuates and reinforces that message, that reality, which is what a tremendous resource we have in having access to that institution for learning. So I hope that children and parents now by virtue of hearing this recognize, if they didn't already, what a great resource it is. I also wanted to draw attention. I was really, one of the slides, in your first hunk of slides, talks about the percent of students scoring advanced or proficient in the 2009 MCAS. And, you know, there was a notion in my mind that thought, well, you know, because of the different types of education that goes on at the Shawshene versus traditional, quote-unquote, I didn't expect that you'd be right in line, and not only you were right in line, you're above some. So kudos. That was a very pleasant surprise, and I'm embarrassed to say I was surprised by that. But I'd like for you to help me understand better, because clearly, I'm not as intelligent as some of the kids that go to school here. I'm looking at the net school spending as compared to foundation budgets. I'm not sure I understand the language of that slide.
Yeah.
What does that pertain to?
When the state establishes the Chapter 70 formula, they recognize that it costs X amount of dollars, let's say, let's say, $5,000 to educate students in a part-time kindergarten program. It may cost $7,500 to educate students in a elementary school program. It may cost $8,500 to educate students in a junior high school, middle school program. And it may cost $10,000, $11,000 to educate students in a high school program. In a vocational technical program, it'll cost $15,000. And the reason is because within the formula, the state recognizes that your per pupil ratios at a charcoat high school education, in the formula, 17 to 1. In a vocational technical program, it's 10 to 1. In an elementary school, believe it or not, it's 22 to 1. And in junior high school, for some crazy reason, it's 25 to 1. So the state gives each type of education, on average, a funding source. So in Wilmington's case, your foundation budget might be above, I'm guessing here, $8,900. But I'm not that far off at $8,900. At Shawshene Tech, our foundation budget is probably around $13,500, okay? And so when the state takes a look at what do you actually spend vis-à-vis foundation, the average district in the state, the average, spends at 115% of foundation, 115.3. We spend at 118.1. You spend at 119%. Bedford spends at 156%. So Bedford might have a foundation budget of $9,000 per pupil, but they actually spend about $13.5 per pupil. That's comparing apples to apples. And the reason why it's comparing apples to apples is because state aid is determined by that formula. For example, in your case, town of Wilmington historically received approximately, approximately 20 cents of every foundation dollar that the Chapter 70 formula called for. When the Chapter 70 formula was redone in 2007, the state took a look at Wilmington, and they said, holy Toledo, that town should be getting 40 cents for every dollar they spent. Your state aid, Wilmington's Chapter 78, because of a couple of factors, one of which your enrollment went up significantly in one year. Your state aid has been going like this because you were only getting 20 cents on the dollar. And the goal the Commonwealth had was to get you to about 39 cents on the dollar. Shawshene Tech, at the same time, was only getting about 22, 23 cents on the dollar in state aid. Our target share is now 37 cents. And so that's why we benefited both Shawshene and Wilmington in terms of additional state aid over the course of the past three or four years, is because of the foundation budget, the way it's computed, and the target share. And the target share is determined, the state takes a look at the wealth of the community as measured by both property wealth and income wealth. The way they look at Shawshene Tech is they take into consideration the wealth of the five communities. And so foundation budget's really important, because it really takes a look at what are you spending compared to other voc tech schools? Shawshene Tech is right in the middle in terms of voc tech schools. We're not the high, Minuteman's the high, they're probably around 30 grand. We're at about 18, 4 or so. And the low might be around 14, 5, which is Neshoba Tech. Conversely, you're not way over the state average, which is 115%. You're at 119%. So what you spend on kids is a little above the state average, and what we spend on kids is a little bit above the state average when you compare us to the foundation budget. And that's why, that's why we do these comparisons. Because if, again, if we put 22 students in a plumbing shop trying to redo a bathroom, you wouldn't be able to teach, you wouldn't be able to teach much of anything at all.
Thank you. I appreciate the expansion on that slide. There's a lot of information there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Beautiful. Any questions or comments from the audience? Beautiful. I thank you very much for coming out here. Great presentation. Obviously, a lot of work went into this project before this evening, getting to this point. And Mr. Gillis and Mr. Peterson, I thank you also for being here tonight.
I just want to accept the praise. It's really indicative of the work, the hard work of our teachers and students. And I want to let the town manager know that it looks like we're going to have 10 more Wilmington students at Shawshene Tech next year versus this year. So obviously, that'll be reflective in the foundation budget next year as well.
Not to our advantage.
Thank you.
They're probably all quarterbacks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Very good. Our 7:45 appointment is with Amanda Muncie, Vice President of Wilmington Farmers Market Association, proposal to establish a farmers' market in Wilmington. Mrs. Muncie?
Hi, gentlemen. I'm Amanda Muncie, the Vice President, and this is Dana Burnham. She's a present, she's going to give the presentation, and I'll just be up here for questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Could you just state your name again?
Dana Burnham.
Thank you.
I'd like to start with an opening statement. Mr. Kyra, Mr. Smaglia, members of the board, we are here tonight because of our belief that a successful farmers' market will be a great asset to Wilmington, enhancing the local sense of community and the local economy, as well as creating an opportunity for residents of other towns to discover Wilmington. Having a strong community-building role is one of the most important keys to a successful farmers' market. A successful farmers' market is much more than just a place to buy vegetables. It is a place where the community can gather and connect with each other in a friendly and informal way while they are shopping at the market and participating in different featured activities each week. These activities could include watching local performers and craftspeople, learning about local farming and nutrition, and participating in children's and family activities, all in a fun festive atmosphere. A good farmers' market is a family and community event that people look forward to and not just another stop on a list of weekly chores. just another stop on a list of weekly chores. The location of a farmers market is especially important in creating this kind of community building atmosphere. The Old Swain School site is ideally situated for people to linger and enjoy the sense of community fostered by the market. The farmers market is a perfect use of municipal land, much in the way the nearby town common is a gathering place for the community. As a dynamic community activity, a farmers market has an essential responsibility to be a good neighbor to local businesses. We feel strongly that the farmers market will be positive for local businesses. The market will draw people to Wilmington, and they will likely linger and shop at local businesses, perhaps returning to them on other days as well. We hope you will support the location of the farmers market at the Old Swain School site. We believe this location will be especially important to the success of the farmers market, and a successful farmers market will be an asset to the entire Wilmington community. Continuing with our presentation, which is missing a page, so I have a, you'll see when we get to the spot what's missing. So I have copies for everyone. So the association has a board of directors. I'm the president. Amanda is the vice president. Our clerk, Don Reedy, is here. Stan Dantswitz is our Director of Technology, and Diane Lovine is our treasurer. We also have a couple of other members of the association here as well, our marketing coordinator, Maria O'Donnell, and Lisa Ward, who's our photographer. So the reason we are here tonight, as I stated before, is we're asking for your support for having the market on the Swain School site. Amanda appeared before you in April, and you had some questions for us, so we'd like to answer those. And we'd also like to update you on our progress since we were here last. So after we were here, we actually put out a call via the town crier, saying we were going to, if people were interested in having a farmers market, please come to a meeting at the library. So since then, we've met monthly. We've done a lot of research. We've relied on the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources for guidance on creating a farmers market. They have a lot of online resources that have been really, really helpful in helping us to understand exactly what we're undertaking. We've also contacted other area markets, which has been really wonderful. People are very forthcoming with their information. There's a really nice amount of support out there for this kind of activity. We've created a mission statement, which is here, to provide a place where our members of our community can purchase a diverse and interesting selection of locally grown fresh fruits and vegetables and locally produced goods from small Massachusetts farms. We have guiding principles, market rules, a business plan. We've filed with the state as a corporation, which was a first step to filing as a nonprofit business, so we're in the works on that. We have a steering committee of various roles. We have a website, which you can check out. We've done an online survey, that survey, that was one of the things that the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources site recommended we do to help us understand if people were actually interested in having a farmers market. So actually, when we did this, the presentation, almost 400 households had responded, but it's actually over 400 at this point. And our mailing list is actually over 100 names as of this point. And we have a Facebook group, and it's, I think it's 202 members right now. So one of the things that our research did find out was of the 195 farmers markets operating in the Commonwealth, 132 used municipal property and 63 sell on private property. So that's either a town common for the municipal land, it could be a town common, town park. There are even a few places where they close a shopping district on a Sunday morning or something like that to hold a market. The other thing we found out is that accessibility, visibility, and a great setting aid market success. Other area markets have told us that's a really key issue. And the reasons we think the Swain School site is perfect is, number one, it's green. It's a beautiful, beautiful site. There are trees for shade. There's ample parking. It's a central invisible location. And we also feel that since it's on Middlesex app and the parking's right there, there's not going to be an issue with people coming and having to cross a busy street. So that was actually the page that was missing. So for our survey results, it was a 10-question survey. Like I said, over 400 people responded. More than half of the people think that organically grown produce is very important, and that is what we're hoping our market will sell. The farmers that we'll reach out to will be farmers growing organic foods. You can see over 90% rated quality and freshness of produce as very important. A large number of respondents, can't remember the exact number, but 80 or 90% thought Saturday morning would be a great time to have a market. A pretty good majority thought Sunday morning would be a great time to have a market. The committee as a whole, we actually don't have a preference. That's one of the reasons we asked in our survey what people thought would be, would work for them and their families. And every person who responded to the survey answered all 10 questions, and quite a few of them left really, really wonderful comments, which are, there's a sample of them on the next slide, which I know is hard to read, but later in this packet, we actually printed out all the comments that we had gotten from people when we put this packet together. They're still coming in, and they're still really wonderfully positive. Also in this packet is our business plan. And just for some highlights of that, we're hoping to begin the market in the summer of 2011. Right here, it says June. We also have some information that for a first year out, it's better to have a short market, maybe starting mid-July, when there's a more abundant availability of fruits and vegetables. The early growing season is a lot of leafy greens and not that much variety. So if we want to start with a big bang and really interest people, we might be better off initially starting in July and going into the fall. One of our goals is to establish strategic relationships with local businesses that share our goals of improved health awareness for the community. We've estimated our startup costs at $2,000. We hope to raise that money through sponsorships, through local businesses, perhaps a fundraiser or a membership drive. And once we get going, our recurring revenue will be generated by vendor fees. We will purchase insurance, liability insurance, through the Massachusetts Association of Farmers Markets, and that's also included in our estimated startup costs. Not in this packet, but I do have a copy of, if you're interested in it, is the market rules that we've put together for our market. This is just a sampling on this slide of what we're intending. A maximum of 18 10-by-10 booths, 12 of them devoted to farmers, and the balance devoted to either community groups or local artisans, maybe a bakery or cheesemaker, something along those lines. We think a weekly vendor fee of $25 per booth is reasonable. We'd like farmers to be no more than 40 miles away from Wilmington and in Massachusetts, ensuring that whatever's brought to the market is fresh. And there are other things here that are in the market rules, just as highlights. So our next steps are to secure a location, to meet with public safety and public health officials, to fill our steering committee positions. We still would love someone to step up as a legal counsel, volunteer some time. We're looking for somebody to maybe be a sponsorship coordinator for us. There are a few other positions that we think are key for a market. And we do need to fund sponsors and some other kind of fundraising. So in conclusion, many farmers markets in Massachusetts are held on municipal sites. Location is a key factor in a market success. The Swain School site has high visibility and many other features that make it desirable, as I stated before. While a farmers market is a new idea for Wilmington, many residents enthusiastically welcome and support it. Farmers markets help build a sense of community, so we're requesting that you vote to approve having the farmers market on the Swain School site. We're available for questions, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Nice, nice presentation here.
Thank you.
Just off the top of my head there, have you contacted our Board of Health?
Amanda's actually spoken with Shelley Newhouse, and I know one of her concerns is that we have sanitary facilities, so that is in our startup costs. We'd have to, either we would rent, you know, a Porta-John or something like that. One of our hopes with the Swain School site is that we could have access to the Fourth of July building, and our thought was maybe through some of the fees that we raise with the farmers, we could make a donation to the Fourth of July Committee. Because we're a nonprofit, we're not looking to make money off of the farmers market, so...
Okay. And I didn't notice anywhere that any other Board of Health where these other markets are, they have like different permits. I'm just not sure we've ever, obviously, gone through something like this.
Right.
I'm not sure what kind of permits or that you would need.
Go ahead.
I actually spoke to Shelley Newhouse, and there is a form, a paper for the state where, are you saying like what the vendors will have to, is that what you're concerned about, what the vendors will have to do?
Right, absolutely.
As a vendor, and that's what my position will be with the Farmers Market Association, a vendor will have to get licensed through Shelley Newhouse or through the Board of Health, and they can only sell fresh eggs, fresh produce, and jams and jellies, and that's it, unless she approves otherwise. But according to the state regulations, that's the only thing that's allowed at a farmers market. And of course, that would be my position to go with the vendors to get that approval from her.
Okay.
The other things too, in our market rules, we are requiring vendors to carry their own insurance. We won't accept them into the market unless they have insurance.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just one comment, at least for now. In your list of action items at some point in the methodology, somewhere here, you have, you know, one of the priorities is to get a secure location. Here we go, next steps. Secure location, meet with public safety and public health officials, fill steering committee positions, and find sponsors and funding. From my perspective, parcel of what the board needs to do is to get some input from public safety and public health officials, even in regards to your request to secure the location. And I know that sometimes when you're going through a regulatory process of sorts, especially if it's fairly new in any given place, as this would be in Wilmington, sometimes you have to travel a couple of tracks at the same time.
Right.
And I'm not, I don't have any negative reaction to your proposal and to some of the things that you're suggesting, other than notwithstanding your representations about how many towns offer municipal land, still want to have some meaningful feedback from legal counsel, public safety, and public health in order to, you know, to take on that specific request for a location. And certainly, I would expect that the manager can take your presentation, you know, develop some of the information you've provided, run it by Shelley Newhouse as well as others, and just make sure that we have as much information as we can.
That would be great. I mean, if there's anything that you want us to do as far as meeting with public safety, public health, we'd love to do that as well.
And just as a general comment, I think you would find it more efficient, if nothing, to work through the manager's office to make sure that you're touching all the bases at once. So while it certainly is great that you've been proactive trying to get some of this information, that's great, but I think we, you know, we rely, as a volunteer board, we rely quite a bit on the manager's ability to get all of his departmental people on the same page in terms of information and review and recommendations to this board. So nothing negative, no guarantees. Let's continue to work through the administrative people, get some of that review that you've kind of scratched the surface on.
Okay.
It sounds like you haven't even submitted some information. Make sure we can avail ourselves of that same information.
I think it's a great idea. You know, I would be in support of it as far as, like you said, health and safety. We get by that. I have no problem with this. I think it's a great, great idea for the community.
Great.
Especially with health, and we were just putting a wing on the school ahead of you, so...
Yeah, I make no false impressions here. I'm real bullish about this. I've been excited about when you first came and presented the concept, and obviously it was just sort of kicking the tires a little bit, but I got excited about the notion of it and was hopeful that we collectively could find a good place for this to be set up. Obviously, location, location. You set up the best market in the worst location, and it may not succeed. So I'm really excited, and I hope that we, I think it's just logistics that need to be worked through, like Mr. Newhouse just said. We'll get through the legal people and the fire and the police and the health, and we'll, you can dot all your i's and cross all your t's, and I'm confident that Mr. Kyra and his team will get and help you navigate that path. But I also, I'm excited to hear my colleagues here being generally in support of the idea because I do believe that the town needs to be supportive and will benefit from being supportive to this type of an activity within our border. So I think we all stand to benefit, you know, as a community, but also for the individuals that run the event. So congratulations, good luck, and continue the process, and I'm excited to continue to hopefully support it.
Thank you.
Very good. And as Mr. Newhouse said, it'd be very important for you to work with the town manager here, and I might have some questions here tonight.
You just had a few questions, Mr. Chairman, and I may, you may have answered them, and again, we're at a little bit of disadvantage because we just got these...
I understand.
...today, and I'm just trying to go through that and listen to you at the same time. Can you tell us what other sites were investigated?
Sure. I actually, in your packet, there's a letter from the Wakefield Town Manager, and there's also a letter from the Bedford Town Manager, both of which have their markets on town land. So I specifically emailed for...
No, no, I mean, what other sites did you investigate in the town of Wilmington?
Oh, we actually haven't. We really thought that the Swain School site was a great site, so we haven't, if we can't get that, then we'll start looking for other sites. And we're planning for a year from now.
Okay, it's my understanding that when we met the last time, there was some concern about the Swain School site, and that you were going to look at other various options. But, okay, so the answer is you have not?
No, we have not. We felt like we had, it was better for us to have one direction, and if that fell through, then we'll investigate other places, whether it's other municipal land or private land. We felt going in, you know, 12, pursuing 12 different things at once wasn't...
Okay, okay. You indicate that you believe, and I'll quote you, "We feel strongly that the farmers market will be positive for local businesses. The market will draw people to Wilmington, and they will likely linger and shop at local businesses." Do you have, you know, I guess I would have some concern about businesses that may be selling the same product.
Competitors, right.
Do you have some empirical data that supports what you said?
There are reports, I could, I definitely have read reports from different organizations, I don't have them off the top of my head, showing that farmers markets do have a positive economic impact on towns. But I would encourage you to read the comments from people, the fuller comments in the back here. There are plenty of people who leave town to do their vegetable shopping, their fruits and vegetable shopping. And I know if I go to another town to do one kind of shopping, I'm also going to do the rest of my shopping there at the same time, so just on a personal level.
Now, would these markets be in a, this, the Swain School site, of course, is not in a commercial area.
True.
So would these markets that you're referring to based upon this comment be in a commercial area, or would they be in...
Many of them are, but others aren't. So, yeah, I think that we definitely, we don't have a town common that's ringed by businesses, so you're right.
Right.
But I think there are people who, the surrounding towns don't have farmers markets, so people from Wilburn or Bilrick or, Antover does have one. North Reading, the other towns would be coming to Wilmington for the farmers market. So some of them, it's likely that they would do other shopping while they're here.
Can you, I think that the chairman mentioned this a little bit, could you provide us with that list of other municipal sites? You said there are 100 and some odd municipal sites that you did a survey.
Sure.
Could you provide that to us? Are the members of the association board all from Wilmington?
They are.
Okay. Okay. Will the town be named as an insured?
I believe that's right. I have just started looking into insurance, and I admit insurance is something I don't understand at all.
No one does.
But yes, the insurance is to protect the market and the town.
And the town, so the town will be named as an insured.
Right, that's right.
Within the policy. Would the, would vendors from Wilmington receive a preference?
That's not in our market rules, but that's a great idea. What, yeah.
I don't, I don't know, we have any.
How does it work, I guess, is the question. I mean, obviously, the Board must select people, you must solicit folks, and I saw briefly in here where you said they must be farmers with 10 acres or less and that kind of thing.
Right, right.
And I'm not sure how many of those would be in Wilmington, but I'm just wondering if Wilmington folks would receive preference. And I guess I would recommend that if, in fact, the Board gives approval.
Right. Well, I'm a farmer, I live in Wilmington, so, you know, if I decide to sell my stuff there, you know, I could be approved.
Your farm is in Wilmington?
My farm is in Drakehead, but I'm a resident of Wilmington.
Okay.
So I farm in Drakehead, and I'm a resident of Wilmington. We would give preference to, I don't know how many farms are in Wilmington, but, you know, if there were.
So Wilmington Farms and Wilmington residents like yourself.
If they, yes, if they had an artisan, if they were a vendor that we, you know, an artisan cheesemaker or baker, someone like that.
The other thing is, what is the, I noticed in here that you talked about Saturday or Sunday as being the best day, and I think the Board needs to look at that very carefully. Is that what you're recommending?
Well, like I said, we're, none of us who have met over these past months have any preference, and other farmer's markets are all over the map on what their times are. And there are advantages and disadvantages. Bedford's market goes from 2:00 to 6:00 on Mondays. Acton's is Sunday mornings, and they do, they close off a street in their business district. You know, if it's on the weekend, you get families who are out running their errands, maybe going, you know, back and forth from a soccer game or baseball practice or whatever. But if we do it in the week and, during the week in the afternoon, then you're getting the people who work in town. There's that whole population. So we don't really have a recommendation, we just know that of the 400-plus households that responded, I think it's like 90-something percent thought Saturday morning was the best time to have the market. And, you know, that's when people in town have the time available.
I think the Board would need to probably have a sense of that based upon a location. For example, historically, when you mentioned Sunday morning, for example, at that location, the Board has historically not scheduled anything at that site in deference to the various churches that are in the area.
Right.
They've never done that. Do you know what timeframe you're talking about? I don't mean in terms of hours, but in terms of months?
Initially, we'd hope to go mid-July, probably into late September.
Okay. And I ask that again, because Saturdays could be difficult once you get into the school season at the Swain site.
Right, yeah. Right, that's why we.
There are, and that's one of the, I'm not trying to discourage the Swain site.
No, I understand.
I agree with you. If I was sitting on that side of the table, I would be saying what a great location that is. But I think the town is going to need some information in order to make a final decision, so that the location and timing of the operation doesn't.
Right.
Interfere with other activities.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think that's one of the reasons we had public safety on our list of, we know we need to find out about this.
So you'd be talking maybe 12 weeks or something like that, 10, 12 weeks?
Yeah, right, yep.
Mr. Chairman, just to that point, you know, my initial concerns, the last time that you folks were in, it's been a while now, but, you know, my concerns right out of the gate were making sure that it doesn't create some legal headaches for the town, notwithstanding that it's done somewhere else. And secondly, that we consider all the locations. So I would just ask, understanding your strategy was, you know, to focus on one location, I still think it makes sense to work through the manager to try and avail yourself of three, four alternatives, whatever might make sense, you know, when the Board gets pressed on a, you know, a situation of making a decision and saying yes or no. So if there are viable alternatives, I think that you ought to take a look at them, and that way the Board has a couple of viable alternatives.
Okay, are you, can I ask, are you, when you say viable alternatives, are you speaking of municipal land, or are you asking us to see if we can find a private business?
Either one, either one, yeah.
That's a good point, private or municipal.
Right, private is definitely a backup for us, but like I said, we didn't want to be going in five or 10 different directions at once. We just really love the site and we just pick our necks up on it.
My point, Mr. Chairman, is that if it's going to be on municipal property, that we, that there are, there's more information that we'll need in order to, you know, or at least, I mean, it's obviously it's the Board's decision, but in order for me to give a recommendation to the Board, we'll need additional information if it's going to be on municipal property. If it's going to be on a private location, then the Board has some involvement, but certainly not to the extent that it would on a municipal property.
Right, but I guess my point is, it's about alternatives, if you're, you know, I, as I say, I take at face value that there are a number of Wilmington residents who would avail themselves of a resource like this. So if we're going to be a conduit of making that resource available, let's, you know, I just want to make sure we don't make it available at the wrong place at the wrong time. And wrong place, wrong time is sometimes relative to what else might be available, you know, that might be at no cost to the town, at, you know, forget the additional insured, no prospective liability to the town. So, you know, and I certainly don't expect that you would contact every business owner in Wilmington that, you know, is sitting on three acres or more of land. But I do think that just a simple dialogue with the manager's office could probably shortlist potential municipal sites, potential, if nothing else, business areas, you know, that might make sense at least to take a look at. I mean, when we start talking about promoting economic development, and that, you know, prospective buyers at the market might, you know, patronize other Wilmington businesses, well, okay, where's our, where's our business located? Now, that, with the dialogue with the manager and other folks, public safety folks, you might just, you might just say, well, honestly, that doesn't work for us, that area. But at least we could be to a shortlist of municipal land, possibly shortlisted to privately owned business areas. And that, I think that just helps us make a decision that can assist you in bringing this resource to the community.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, to that point.
Mr. Newhouse, if, I'm a little, I guess, reluctant to completely support everything you just said, because I don't want to send them off in a tangent, looking at multiple sites and multiple days. If Town Council, the public safety, public health folks agree that there's no inherent detriment to having this type of an operation on the Swain School, just the site, not talking about time, or what day, or whatever, just speaking about this type of entity on that site. If there's no detriment based on any of those departments, then the next step in my mind is, okay, when can they run it? And if public safety or whomever are the influencing departments suggest hypothetically, Sunday afternoon from 1:00 to 6:00, now all the religious services, I believe, probably are over, whatever, I'm just hypothesizing here. If a time is dictated or determined to be the perfect time, and that site isn't a problem site, then I don't feel like I need for them to come back and say, okay, here's site number one, that we, that all these public safety and our department heads have indicated have no negative. I'm not sure I need to hear that Waltham Street is another viable location, or that Whitfield School is another viable location. It seems like now we're asking them to do a research project. But I'm not saying they shouldn't do it, I just, I would rather have them come back to me with the town manager's recommendations from our department heads on that specific site. If that site becomes a problem site, then absolutely, let's go to Plan B and look for Plan C and Plan D, or whatever the case may be. That's my perspective on this. Your perspective is, I think you want them to go and have alternative sites kind of now, and I'm not sure, it seems like a little bit of a work project.
Well, what I had in, just to use your scenarios and your examples, what if, if from a, from the Board's perspective, from a public safety perspective, Saturday mornings at the Swain School site's not, that's not a great time, you know, between this athletic event that might be going on at the high school, some church-related events in that neighborhood that I'm not even aware of, you know, Saturday mornings in that location isn't great. But Saturday mornings down at the Whitfield is fine. Or Saturday mornings at a church, church parking lot, name your church, that may be interested in doing something like this, that may be located north approximately to Wilmington businesses. I just feel as though there ought to be a dialogue, and I don't think we have to, you know, as I say, send them researching every property alternative to death, but it seems to me that having a dialogue with the town through the administrative offices would be a good idea to come up with a couple of alternatives, that's all. And you came up with a couple, I think, just by making an example.
Yeah.
You know, I think there's other possibilities out there.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, just like to ask a question. Is this something you're looking to get started by this year?
No, next summer is what we're hoping for.
So it's next year?
Yep.
So I guess all the questions you're asking involve back and forth. We have plenty of time for recommendations through Board of Health, Safety, and Town Manager recommendations, I guess, and then back to us. So I think, you know, there's plenty of time, I guess, to get this thing, anchor down, I should say.
I agree, and I think working with the Association, what you've done here is a lot of information from the last time you came in. So I don't want you to think that we're sending you on a wild goose chase or something, like to have to investigate every...
No, I don't feel that way. I mean, all along, we've, the Swain School is what site is what we've sort of pictured in our mind as the perfect place, but every discussion we have is also, if that doesn't work out, then, you know, what other sites are there?
Right.
That would, you know, who do we know in business? What about the churches? All the things that you are suggesting. You know, those are Plan B, Plan C. That said, none of us, I think, can drive past the Swain School without looking at it and thinking it's perfect. I mean, it's really hard to find something that compares.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, please, I add to that. Maybe where the difficulty is on times and to these areas, maybe we should ask to send over like Pop Warner or the Wilmington High School because of basket, baseball, yeah, football, baseball, Pop Warner, to see what these hours are, because, you know, we could come back, but still, if we have written from these organizations saying, you know, Wilmington High School has Friday nights, Saturdays, and possibly Sundays.
I think that's where working with the town manager's office would be handy.
They can get all that, relate to them.
Yeah, I think, I don't think you'd have to reach out to Pop Warner, say, because they're usually right back here.
That was just, that was an example.
Yeah, but I think working with the town manager's office, and he'll help with Town Council and Board of Health and all the other things, I think we should be able to get a little better grasp of what you're looking for, what we can do.
That sounds great.
Excellent.
We'll get you there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice presentation, by the way. Okay. Continue on with correspondence, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, the Board is being asked to consider the request from Deborah Cipriani, the Recreation Director, to use the Town Common and Gazebo for the Summer Concert Series on Tuesday, August 17th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. She's requesting, making this request because the concert that was scheduled for July 14th was postponed due to inclement weather, and the group, which is an a cappella group called Peking and the Mystics, the only date, the other date that they're available during the summer is on that, Tuesday, August 17th.
So the Board to consider, is there any other conflicts on that thing?
In fact, Mr. Chairman, the Board had given approval to the Wilmington Minutemen on that date to practice, I was not at that meeting, but to practice on the Common on that particular date.
Okay, that's the only other conflict on that date?
That's the only other conflict that I'm aware of, yes.
Okay. I don't think that would be an issue if we agreed to have this concert. I've seen the Minutemen out there practice, and there was three of them out there last week I saw. Well. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I don't think there'd be any conflict.
That's the last night that's scheduled for.
That's the last night that's scheduled.
Minutemen exercises.
I would say I'd rather see this gate go down, because this sounds more exciting.
Okay, so any other, that is the last date that they have scheduled to practice?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And even if you didn't want to practice, like I said, last week I saw three of them on the other side towards the back of the Common, so that wouldn't be as big a deal, even if it was a big crowd, which I'm sure it will be. Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move to approve the use of the Town Common on Tuesday, August 17th, from 6:30 to 8:00 for the music group, as described.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? unanimous?
Are you directing me to?
I'm sorry, yes.
Indicate to the Wilmington Minutemen officially that they, you're rescinding, or you're asking that they not?
Well, I think.
Just notify Frank West.
That there'll be a concert on the Common that.
Yeah, I'll call him.
I believe during that meeting, that they said if anything comes up, they'll.
Yes.
Right.
They specifically stated that if there were any conflicts, they would be more than willing to reschedule or relocate, so.
Okay. Board's being asked to consider signing the warrant for the state primary to be held on Tuesday, September 14th, 2010. The polls will be open on that date from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in order for voters to cast ballots in the state primary for candidates of political parties for the following offices: Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer, and Auditor, all for the Commonwealth; Representative in Congress for the Sixth District; Counselor for the Fifth District; Senator in General Court for the First, Essex, and Middlesex; Representatives in General Court for the 19th and 21st Middlesex; the District Attorney for Northern District; and the Sheriff for Middlesex County.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to sign the warrant for the state primary on Tuesday, September 14th.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the Board of Selecting.
Okay. Any new business, committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to have you look into a, if a stop sign needs to be put up at Washington Ave, I had an inquiry about it, and so whatever the procedure is, if we could look at that.
Washington Ave on Clock Street?
Yeah, Washington Street off of Clock Street, the Clock Street going on to it.
Okay, okay. Any other new business committee reports?
No committee reports. I'd just simply like to compliment every resident who participated in Fourth of July activities and did so in a positive manner. I'd certainly like to compliment the Fourth of July Committee for putting on another successful and wonderful year. I think it was a heck of a week.
Certainly was. Kind of missed public comments. Is there any public comments out there?
Actually, Chairman, I did have a quick one, a question, quite quick. George, in the front of the Clock Street. I was looking at the Habin's bylaws over the weekend, all of the zoning regulations, the planning regulations, and the matter of the issue, and I noticed in Chapter 592, Section 5, multiple officers, possibly who can and can't serve on the Board, and how land and who are pregnant, and so forth. And it occurred to me that we currently, my understanding is, have a school committee member that's also a member of the Conservation Commission, and that would appear, as I noticed this weekend, to be in conformity with Chapter 592, Section 5. I was wondering if there's any comment on that.
I was not aware of that, if that's what you're asking here. I mean, I don't think anyone else was, but we could definitely look into that, Town Council.
Yeah, there is an individual who is.
Correct, yeah. It seems, did we get a statement?
On the school committee and on the Conservation Commission, I guess it would be his responsibility.
Looks like Section 5 says he can be on one or the other.
Right, I, yeah.
Okay, I just curious about that.
I think it would be his responsibility to step down, I guess, for one or the other. I can't.
One or the other, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can't make that decision for him. I don't think any of us can.
Well, but shouldn't the town, you know, let them know that you picked one? Well, but shouldn't the town, you know, let them know that you pick one? Say we can't serve on both?
I'll take whatever direction the board gives me.
What are the ramifications of this kind of a thing? I mean, obviously, if it... I assume you're right. Assuming that's the case, what is the... It's a violation of bylaw. What's the downside here? It's a stupid question, but what's the precedent or is there any?
I would...
I mean, I think if the board wants to direct a question to council, but I don't...
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the ramifications, I don't know that... I wouldn't have known the reference, but I recognize that, you know, the summary of that, I know I've seen it before.
Why not?
Yeah, I would just say that the question's been raised, you know, I'm sure the individual question is going to hear about it, probably won't have to do anything. He's going to find out what he's supposed to do based on this public discussion, but there's no reason why you can't ask council if the board of selectmen has any obligation or it's incumbent on the board to do anything. Certainly, we should know that.
Right, if we're supposed to take action, I want to make sure we don't turn a blind eye to it. That's my feeling on this subject.
This is common. I know that there was another member elected to the board of selectmen several years ago that was a member of the CAP and she had resigned from the CAP as a result of the election. So that's a president that I was familiar with. I was kind of... I was, just like I say, I was going through all the documents, was I finding through the code, looking for an answer to another question, and this popped out and I just wanted to raise your attention.
Can you repeat where it's found again, please?
It was in the Habens Bylaws, chapter 592, section 5, multiple officers.
That's the town charter.
This is the town charter, which is at the end of the bylaws. I have it provided.
I'm sure I have access to it as well.
I wasn't worried either. I didn't say I was just going... I'm looking for answers to something else. I went through everything pretty close. Thank you.
Important dates?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a concert on the common scheduled for this Wednesday, July 21st. The group is called Instant Replay. It's actually a Wilmington band. July 28th, concert on the common finishes with quintessential brass. Both of those concerts go from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Remind residents who are interested that August 5th is Beach Day at the Town Beach, a cooperative venture between the Wilmington Police Association and the Town's Recreation Department. Residents are invited to attend the activities from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m., 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on August 5th. And then we have brush drop-off dates in August, for August 11th and August 14th at Old Main Street. August 11th is a Wednesday.